At, on December ninth, it is now six o'clock and we will begin the meeting. And first up is invocation by Pastor Hughie Hudson of Restoration Church.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. And as always, thank you so much for the opportunity to come in and be a part of your meeting in this capacity. So, can we pray? Dear heavenly Father, it is an honor to stand into your, in your presence today before your people and lift up your name in this place. I thank you for this city, God, that we all call home and for the many things that we enjoy here. God, I want to pray for those who serve this city. I lift up the chief of police and the members, the men and women who wear the blue. I pray for our fire chief and those who serve in that department. And God, all who serve this city in any capacity, I just pray for them right now. And I pray that 2024 has been a great year for them and for their families and for this city. And I pray that 2025 is even a better year. Now, God, I pray for this meeting, for this gathering, for those who come into this place to discuss the business, the issues, the concerns that they have for this city. I pray for our mayor. I pray for these council members who will be making decisions, God, that may impact various things that's going to be discussed tonight. I actually, they would just lean into you and trust you to lead and guide them. I pray for wisdom. I pray for godly counsel. And I pray, God, for a heart to do what is right. So, Father, just have your way here tonight. Fill this place with your presence. And God, that everything that's said or done here, that'll be for your glory and your glory only. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
All right, she followed me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can I get the roll call, please?
Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Here.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Yeah.
Council President Seifert?
I am here. Okay, are there any amendments tonight to the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move into, next up is the approval of the minutes. And first up is the minutes for work session dated November 20th, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Next up will be the minutes for the regular session held on November 25th of 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, can I get the vote?
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. And now moving into presentation and awards. And first up, we have the Fall 2024 Civic Awareness Academy graduation. Do we have pomp and circumstance?
No, we don't. No. Forgot to order that. So, thank you, Mayor Finley, council members, and department heads and staff for making this a very successful CAA this year. Thank you to the class for your commitment to the city. And let's get our graduation underway. Mayor, would you come down? Would you like to take your shirt? Yeah, there it is. All right, first up, Sandy Albee. Brandon Allen. David Beer. Brandon Bishop. Cheryl Bowles. Cesar Castillo. Erin Hoggins. John Cole. Emily Davis. Robert Hausman. John Howard. Kenneth Jackson. Clarice Johnson. Ryan Leonard. Ellen Little. Jeff Little. Sue Mahdi. Alfred Modral. Katie Moore. Megan Nivens-Tannett. Beebe Ochen. 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 Thank you. Jonathan Pierce. David Sheed. Kristi Poole. Debbie Roderick. David Sipple. Yvette Torbert. Mike Van Rasen. Benjamin Wander. Sharon Weaver.
And while everybody's coming up, I got to take a picture with every one of them and I really appreciate that. But Tracy Gillespie is who did all the work on this and the class from start to finish. She's put together the curriculum, so can we give Tracy a big round of applause?
Get all the silence from this big old podium and I'm back.
They'll cover us. They're tall enough.
We don't.
Yeah, it'll be fun.
You want me?
I'm going to get Tracy to read.
Sure could.
Yeah.
Get in front of the mayor.
Make it on tippy toes.
She can't lie, right? She's going to talk to me. Probably anything controversial. Amazing and early.
There's your Christmas card picture. Thank you for attending. Yes, ma'am. Good to see you, Ms. Yvette. Merry Christmas.
Good deal.
Congratulations.
There's your Christmas card picture.
There you go. Perfect.
I would offer to help, but better for you to do it.
Okay, well, I'll let you guys file out, but moving on to the next item in the agenda is a presentation by new executive director Christina Hearn with respect to the Madison Visionary Partners update.
Hello, thank you for having me today. Hello. I'm Christina Hearn. I'm the new executive director of Madison Visionary Partners, or as we are often referred to as MVP. I've been in my role since October 1st and have had to hit the ground running. I've met so many amazing people in Madison and it's just such an incredible community and I'm so thankful to call it home and for the opportunity to lead MVP and the incredible work that they do. Our mission is connecting people who care with initiatives that enrich the quality of lives of people in the community of Madison. For some of you that may not be fully aware that are in the room today of what we do, I want to share some of our notable projects and events from this past year. The Kids Kingdom renovation, we were able to work alongside the city and the community, spearheading the fundraising for it. And it was finished up at the end of last year. It's an incredible playground and my family has personally benefited from it. It's my son's favorite thing to do after we have soccer games at Dublin. We held the Second Annual Madison Visionary Awards where we awarded several volunteer awards as well as $10,000 in grants to five deserving nonprofits doing great work here in Madison. We completed Phase One of Madison's mural trail, putting two public art murals in the downtown area. In October, we held the Third Annual Witch's Stroll. This year, it was held in downtown Madison where over 500 attendees gathered for Halloween Fun on Main Street. And MVP was also able to help lead the charge for fundraising for the new community center. We are thrilled to see this new project come to life. The Madison Senior Center is already running full speed ahead in their new location. It's just such a beautiful space and the Madison community will get to enjoy it for years to come. We are grateful for the partnership that we have with the City of Madison and we are grateful for the investment in MVP. Thank you all. Really quickly, this past year, for every dollar that was invested in MVP by the City of Madison, we were able to deliver over $11 back in quality of life projects for the citizens here. And that's over an 1,100% return on your investment. That's pretty cool, I think. We're excited about 2025 and cannot wait to continue tackling new projects and see what we can accomplish together in the further, to further the quality of life in Madison. I wanted to just quickly share about, I mentioned our Madison Visionary Awards, we'll be having that, our third annual one in March of 2025, where we honor individuals who make our community a great place and volunteer their time and talent. So, just a reminder that nominations are open through January 3rd. And we're accepting nominations for Youth Volunteer of the Year, Community Volunteer of the Year, and Philanthropic Businessperson of the Year. We also have our Community Impact Mini Grant Cycle is open, and that's designed for nonprofits and other eligible organizations that are doing work or would like to do work within the Madison city limits here. Applications for that are open and are due on February 21st. And the recipients of both the awards and the Community Impact Grants will be recognized at the awards launch in March 27th at 11:30 in 2025. So, if anyone needs more information or would like to nominate someone for an award or apply for a grant, you can find all that information on our website, mvp Madison.org, or I'll be here through the entire meeting. If you want to get more information, I'm happy to send it over to you. Madison is such a special place and I'm so excited about its continued growth and all the ways we can partner to make it an even better place to live. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, now we're going to move into public comments. So, everyone that gets up, please ask that you speak into the mic and let us know what district, your name and district. And everyone has three minutes. Some folks signed up ahead of time, and so we'll go based on that. And Ms. Beebe, you are first up, ma'am.
I wouldn't be here except for the academy in which I thoroughly enjoyed. Okay, I went to ceramics today. I was going to come talk about the cemetery, but I went to ceramics today. It is not running smoothly. October the 15th, we closed. Today is the 9th. It's still not, haven't poured a thing yet there. It's not doing right. There are too many things wrong to mention them all here. The kill room is a complete mess. The room heat, the room, our room heat has been on and on, on and off, and they've used a heater, you know, that you plug in. We were told not to use heaters because the heaters made the furnace not run in the room. Now, how many of you all use a heater in your bathroom? I do. I use a heater. I use radios, TVs, all kinds of things plugged in, and my furnace runs fine. I don't understand that. They say that affects this. Really? How many of you use a heater? You do use a heater? It's unreal. I had to write this down today and hadn't had time to change it. Hope I can read it. Can't anyone in this city fix things that don't work? The lights in the ceiling don't work, and it's been two months. Remember two months waiting to do that? I can't understand that. And I want to know, who approves the items for ceramics? We haven't gotten some of the stuff in. The way it's placed is unreal. As I said, we still haven't poured anything from the middle of October, so therefore nothing has been accomplished. I could go on and on. I would like some answers. The sink is not working today. Two men came in to fix the sink. Don't know what was wrong with that. I would like to know, who approved the items and who makes decisions for the equipment? There's been, you know, things were put in wrong, had to be redone. The ceramics at the community center is not running smooth at all. No one in the council has ever answered any of my questions about this. I've talked about the ceramics for ages. And have you, anybody there, anybody up here been out there to ceramics? Does anybody in the city know anything about ceramics?
I'll follow up on it for you. And then when you talked about the lights, were the lights also at the community center?
Yes. Everything's at the community center.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Because I do know that...
You know, I've talked about the parking, but that's another thing.
Yes, ma'am. Got it.
But, you know, we've had holidays. I haven't been that often because we've had holidays. I can't go tomorrow because it's a holiday. So, even if we could have poured, we couldn't pour today because we can't take it out tomorrow. It ain't running good at all. And the planning has been bad, bad, bad.
We'll follow up on it, Ms. Beebe. Okay. Next up, we have a Mr. Jonathan Pierce.
I won't be taking very long this evening. I'm here because of the civic awareness training we've just gone through.
Would you mind letting us know your district, just for the record, please?
You know, I don't know my district number.
All right.
I'm sorry. I'm in Teddy's district, but that's how I know it.
District 3.
3.
Okay. I have stood before this council before and I have not been very agreeable. I apologize for that. This civic awareness training has opened my eyes to just how much is going on in this community, and I applaud you, and Tracy in particular, for putting this together and giving us an open view of all that is operating in this city. Thank you for this program. I, I want to express my strong support for anyone who thinks that they might want to attend the next civic awareness class. It's well worth your time to go and listen. I want to give you one example of how this awareness, civic awareness program, has had an immediate effect on me. The, I live in a cul-de-sac and the big garbage trucks come through and they've got a lot of weight in them. And it's actually worn down the street that was just paved like last year or so. And now there's a huge rut. And so, you have to wonder if the substrata has been damaged. So, having gone to the civic awareness class at Public Works, I knew where to go. And so, I ran over there and I showed them pictures of what it was. And when I got there, there was no secretary at the welcome window, but a gentleman was walking in behind me and he stopped and he said, "What can I help you with?" Kudos to him. And I've forgotten his name. I'm sorry I did, but... So, he took all my information. He looked at the pictures. I stopped at McDonald's on the way home. By the time I got back to my house, he was driving up to that cul-de-sac. He took a look at the area. He marked off the area that needs to be replaced. And then he told me that he thought that the manhole cover right in the middle of the cul-de-sac was, I'm just out of time. But he got the other people, Madison Utilities, come out. They've determined that something has to be done to that. So, kudos to this program. It's valuable for people who go, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. You made our night.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else that wants to address council tonight? You can bring it to me if you'd like. Thank you, Ms. Peters. If you can state your name for the record and your district, please.
Yes, Jacqueline Peters, District 6. I am here once again to respectfully ask you council members and mayor to rescind and nullify any agreements, partnerships made with Main Street, Alabama, or Main Street America. This request is to include no more Main Street workshops here. I hear they've been going on since 2018 or 19. No more seminars from them. No more involvement from them regarding historical preservation of our downtown or anything else regarding our beautiful downtown. I've stated before, I'm an investigative reporter, former television news anchor in the PM. I know what's going on. As I have stated before, Main Street America has a deceptive campaign going on really throughout America. Their number one priority is not, not historic preservation of our downtown areas, but rather their number one priority is to turn our downtown into a homosexual stronghold. And you can go and look at their site, look at their vision, look at their mission, and you tell me differently. I hope some of you have done that. The city council and mayor should not change downtown Madison's culture or history based on a group's identified sexual practices. We don't do that. Madison's downtown area should never be used to promote the sexual practices of others and force recognition of their sexual practices by its citizens. If you continue with Main Street, this will stain and tarnish our city. It'll make it a less desirable place for families and children to live and others as well. Main Street America, go to Main Street America, that's where it's all at. Main Street, Alabama, is just their little covering here. It's sort of like Global Ties, Alabama. I know about them, too. Main Street America wants to center our city around the theme of sexual practices. Please vote to stop this. They want to be, this group wants to be predominant. You know, they're not pluralistic. We don't want to hear about sexual behaviors. I plan to keep coming with more information. They're fighting this battle at the state level with these historic preservation societies. They're manned by liberals, not Republicans, I can believe, and they have billions of dollars. They have put $1 billion into Alabama since 2014. They have all the money in the... They have all the money in the world to entice these cities with blood money. They don't know what's happening because there's four points to it. There's steps to it. You don't see it right away. It's very, very carefully orchestrated until they got you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Your time's up.
It's God's truth.
Thank you, ma'am.
Margie Daly, Karen's District. So we have a few appropriations. Let's see, we have about 172,000 in appropriations this evening. We're going to give 42,000 to Wellstone. They're supposed to be mental health, okay? Being the power of attorney of a mentally ill family member, this is the worst program I have ever dealt with. They were horrible to my family member, made them go out on a highway and hitchhike up north. Okay, that's how horrible they were. I wouldn't give them two cents. Then we got the MVP, which original address was, guess what? 100 City Hall, right here, 100 Hughes Road, City Hall. So that was started at City Hall, and I do believe that there's a great conflict of interest for our council to give any money that was started by Mayor Finley, the MVP, with Mark Jacobson. And obviously, if they can collect that much money, but they're getting it from us. It's coming from opera funds, the county funds, the state funds. They're not, you know, they get a few donations from people that get dividends. All right. Anyway, I see we're going to put water in or a water line in for a butterfly garden in Dublin Park. I've never seen a butterfly garden in Dublin Park. I go there five times a week. I don't get it. Okay. Then we have 2024-415-R, authorizing parks that close at dusk for new lighting and ground penetrating radar to check the ground, but the parks close at dusk. Meanwhile, back in the city, our lights are gone. Our streetlights are gone. We have these unhealthy, that affects 33% to 40% of the population's eyesight, LEDs unshielded on our roads that do not light the roads. You put them on Hughes, you put them on County. Everybody with astigmatism, 33% of the population cannot see in these lights. I have sent you the AMA regulations to every one of yous. You have read them. You have heard for two years, we need streetlights on our streets. We have more motor vehicle accidents happening now. The engines and the sirens go all day long. I live right over here. I can hear them all day long. 20 years ago, you were lucky if they went out once a month. Now they're going out five, six times a day. There's many motor vehicles. We've had people hit by cars. The lighting needs to be fixed. Why can't we get our Cobra arms back? What happened to them? Are they at Public Works? Are they at Huntsville Utilities? Can we request them back? I mean, it is causing problems with accidents and eyesight. Do we really need to put lights in a park that closes at dusk before lights on our streets? And we have sent you lists and lists, and it's going on for two years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else that would like to address council? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comments, and we will move into consent agenda and finance committee report.
All right, and the finance committee has reviewed all the current periodic bills to be paid and found everything to be in order. With that, I'd like to move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. With that, we're going to move into presentation and reports, and Mayor Finley, you're up first.
I will just remind everybody of the Christmas parade this coming Saturday at 7:00, down Hughes Road. And other than that, I don't have anything else.
All right, thank you, sir. Council District Number 1.
Yeah, I just have one item. We're going to meet December 30, I think, rather than the 23rd. Our next council meeting is December 30, so Merry Christmas to everyone, and that's all I have.
Thank you for reminding me.
Yes, sir, my pleasure.
All right, District 2 and 3 are out tonight, so that will go to District Number 4.
No new business tonight.
Okay, District 5?
No new business.
And District 6?
District 6 has something to say. First, I just want to thank everyone who worked on the wonderful Christmas tree lighting event, the Wasseling. It was a great event for the families. I just sat there and just watched all the children's faces just light up. So for everyone that was involved, just a huge thank you, and everybody's looking forward to the great capers, the chicken capers, coming this Saturday. You can stand outside the Rexall Drugs and catch moon pies, and then there's also gifts that are given out if you catch a chicken. And so many people have donated so many different items this year again. And again, it's just one more way that we can come together as a city and celebrate the holidays together, besides the wonderful parade that's going to be happening, too. Second thing, Madison Visionary Partners. I have been the liaison now for quite some time. I've been attending their board meetings. They have a completely different address now. I don't know, it may have been set up here, but now they have their own offices and that sort of thing. They have recently put new members on the board, John Howard, Ms. Lane, and Ben Strickland. So they are continually growing and changing. They do bring in lots of money that is from donations from very reputable people that service our city. As she told you, for every dollar that we've given them, they bring back $11. It is, it is a wonderful organization, and I believe that they are serving the city with the best of intentions in every way. Next, as far as street lighting, Victoria, they were also very concerned about their street lighting. They put together a petition. They had 35 different people sign the petition, and now extra light poles are going to be put in there to provide more lighting so they are not so dark. Okay? So if your community, if your area, your subdivision would like to get more, this is the way I have been told to get it, is to put together petitions so they know that it's more than just one or two people who want to change the lighting in their area. So that is that. I think that is all that I had written down. I do want to wish everyone a very, very Merry Christmas. I hope everyone has a safe and enjoyable time with their families, or if they travel, whatever they do. Merry Christmas.
All right, thank you, ma'am. With that, I'm moving to District 7. So first thing I've got is Resolution 2024-412-R, authorizing publishing of the December 4th, 2024 city council work session.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you all. With that, I'll just, I'll go into, as well, attended the tree lighting. I think it was Friday? Yeah, Friday. And for everyone that came out, it was amazing to see the folks out as such a frigid night that we had, and it was, you know, a good time had by all. So thank you to, I know Debbie Overcash did a huge lift in getting that event together. I know she had many volunteers as well, but she always does a great job pulling folks together. And if you haven't been downtown, take a look at the trees and frequent some of our businesses down there. Please ask if you do so. And then also, for the folks that attended the Civic Awareness Academy, both this session and the previous, thank you all for volunteering. The pay was great, I know. But I appreciate you guys doing that, participating. And Tracy, many thanks to you as well for pulling that off and organizing, and, you know, all the department heads and council members that attended as well. And I can say for myself, I finally learned what to not wear to court. If I ever have to come. And for those of you that would like to know, also, I'll try and be an entrepreneur. You can pay me five bucks and I'll tell you after the meeting, so. But no, seriously, as well, though, obviously, our next meeting being after Christmas. Merry Christmas to everyone. I hope you get to enjoy it with family and friends, and if not, I hope you get to enjoy it regardless. So with that, we're going to move into board committee and appointments, and we've got two for this evening. And, sorry, I left my reading glasses in the car, so I'm having a hard time.
I think they're Teddy's. You want me to take them? Or you have somebody?
If you got your reading glasses on...
I do have my glasses.
You roll with it.
Okay. I would like to request reappointment of Mr. Dennis Vaughn to the Madison Station Historic Preservation Committee Commission, Place 2, for a term that will end in October 2027.
All right, thank you. Are there any other nominations? All right, seeing none, I guess we will reappoint Mr. Vaughn for that place via consensus.
Yes, sir. And then my second request is the reappointment of Mrs. Opie Balch to the Madison Station Historic Preservation Commission, Place 1. Her term will also end in October 2027.
All right, cool. Any other nominations? All right, seeing none there as well, we will reappoint Ms. Balch to that position via consensus. So looks like we do not have any public hearings tonight, so we'll move into department reports. And Engineering, you are first up, sir.
First tonight, I have Resolution Number 2024-411-R. This is authorizing a commercial aid to construct agreement with Huntsville Utilities. This is for relocation of power lines for project number 23011, Balch and Gooch intersection roundabout. This is not to exceed $7,749 to be paid from the Engineering Department budget.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? I have one question. Is this, are we expecting with this to start seeing earth move, or do we need to...
This is for the relocation of the power, overhead power over there. So this is sort of kind of getting the ball rolling on utility relocate. We can do that. We got, the next thing on here is about right-of-way acquisition.
Yeah, okay. So this is like the planning?
We haven't even bid this yet.
All right, cool. All right, well, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
All right, next we have Resolution Number 2024-419-R. This is authorizing acquisition of rights-of-way for Gooch Road Intersection Improvement Project. $80,000 to be paid from Engineering Department budget. That's sort of a not-to-exceed amount, maximum budget amount, to kind of get these right-of-ways and easements acquired and whatever process it has to go through to get that done.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have some questions. How many properties, or how many sections of properties are being talked about in order to move to right-of-ways?
Did you say how many?
Yeah, how many different parcels?
There's four parcels. This is the intersection up there at Gooch and Balch. So there's four parcels. One's a church, one's a tour residence, one's a business. I believe one of them we're just acquiring easement from, and then the others is, the residence is a very, very small little triangle. You can see in the packet there, really small area from the resident on the southwest side, and then the rest of it is to be acquired via, you know, appraisal and normal process. There's a total of four tracks that are involved.
Okay, where's appraisals done to come up with this price, or is this just a guesstimate at this point?
Well, this is, this is sort of what we budgeted before we did the appraisals, and so the appraisals have been done, and the appraisals are all within this tolerance. It's just a matter of how it ends up being negotiated, you know, as it goes forward, and then, you know, if we have to go into condemnation, all that stuff afterwards. But this number exceeds the appraisal amount, so this is not, we won't go higher than this number.
Okay, I just was wondering what backed up that number?
Yeah, well, it was, it was budgeted, it was one we budgeted prior to, so we had to base that off of right-of-way acquisition and similar other projects that we've done in the last couple of years kind of thing. But we got an appraisal, and that's going to drive what we use to negotiate the property acquisition for, using the appraisal.
Thank you.
Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thanks, sir. Next up is planning.
Your first item is Resolution Number 2024-391-R, and this is a request to set a public hearing for the zoning of property to R1A. This is a single-family developed lot that is a little under an acre. It's .73 acres. We're asking you to set the public hearing for January 13. The zoning is subject to an annexation, which is the next item on your agenda.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Your next item is Proposed Ordinance Number 2025-001, and this is an ordinance for the annexation of the property we just spoke about, and this would be a first reading, so no action, but we'll schedule the second reading for the same night as the public hearing.
All right.
Your third item is Resolution Number 2024-393-R. This is also to set a public hearing, and this is for a property on the opposite side of the street, just down the road. They coincidentally just came in at the same time. This is at 174 Firestone Drive, and this property is 0.79 acres. And again, this public hearing would be set for January 13.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Sorry. Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And the last planning item is Proposed Ordinance Number 2025-002, and this, again, is a first reading for annexation of the property we just spoke of, and that second reading would be scheduled for the January 13 meeting.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, Teddy's favorite guy.
Mm-hmm.
Recreation.
You're all our favorite guy.
Well, I appreciate that. I've got Resolution 2024-415-R, approving a professional services agreement with G-Tech LLC for geotechnical engineering services for soccer field lighting projects. We put this in the budget. This is the first step for installing ball field lights. We're doing fields, two fields at Palmer, one at Dublin.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Corey, I have, I guess, a question. So we're putting up lights there, right? So especially at Dublin, I assume we've got a demand for soccer after dark?
We've got demand for everything after dark, but yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Another, when we say soccer...
Well...
That's a loose term because it's lacrosse and ultimate frisbee, and a bunch of other sports participate on those fields as well.
Okay. And I assume that demand is year-round?
Pretty much.
And it, you know, gets dark, I guess, right now, at least when I got here, probably around 4:30, right?
Correct.
So that's kind of limiting our amount of playtime, right?
Correct.
I got you. All right, just wanted to make sure I understand the request there, so. Any other discussion?